House of the Lord, I love meetings like this. And I can look back on my life in the church and go back to specific meetings to where God influenced my home in specific ways. And after them meetings, my homes was never the same. And it's so important as a Christian to put yourself in meetings like this. And I'm so thankful for the evangelist, the work of the evangelist in the local church. It's such a help to a pastor and to a local church. Brother Josh, so necessary for us to have this in our lives. I hope that you can go back to meetings and we're making new memories of new meetings as we go forward in the future and letting God change our hearts, change our lives. And I'm not interested in just meeting and just for the fun of it tonight. Amen. But let's meet and ask God, "Lord, is there anything in my life that I need to change, to work on, to add to? Part of the sanctification is taken away and put on, taking away the old and putting on the new. And as Paul said, the church at Ephesus, that we would grow up into him and to all things." And so on and so forth. So thank you for being here tonight. It sure is a good, it sure is a blessing to be here at the Lord's house. But Candace is not here tonight. She's homesick, so y'all pray for her. She's not feeling good, her and Annabelle both. So nonetheless, I don't really have any announcements other than tonight we'll have an offering at the end of the service and also tomorrow night there'll be an offering at the end of the service. I want to say this, Kenzie, you did an awesome job at making the tacos. Can I get an amen? And the tacos, we had chicken tacos, beef tacos. Yes, but thank you so much for what you've done, seriously. And also Richard Marie, thank y'all for letting Josh and Amber and the family stay over there at the Double Y and all that y'all have done. We appreciate that. Miss Donna made some desserts that should be legal in nine states. Amen. But awesome, best banana pudding I've ever had in my life. But so thank you so much. Oh, no, Rick, all he does is cause us problems. Amen. He carried it to the car. Now, brother Rick, thank you for what you did for Ellen, all the kids today too at the mall, got them all milkshakes and all that. But thank you for what you do. I appreciate you. Appreciate the local church. Amen. And I need each one of you here. But let's go ahead and pray. Ask God to bless the time that we had together. What a great couple services that we've had. God's used it in my heart to encourage my faith. I hope He's encouraged yours as well. So new sinner, thank y'all for being so faithful and coming to these meetings. Your presence here makes a difference and encourages us. So thank y'all for coming. And anyway, let's go ahead and go to Lord in prayer. Ask God to bless the time we have together tonight. Father, we come to you today and thank you, Lord, so much for the blessings that you have given us in life. Thank you, Lord, for our local church, the individuals that are represented here this evening. I pray, Lord, that you'd give us open hearts and open ears to hear and to receive what you have for us tonight. And we're here again tonight. And I thank you so much, Lord, for the privilege that we have to be here. And Father, thank you for what we've heard so far. And Lord, help us not to walk by what we see only, but Lord, help us to walk by faith in what you've said. Thank you so much, Lord, for what you've given us in the church and what you've given us in these last couple meetings. I pray, Lord, that what we learn tonight, what we hear tonight would mold and make us, Lord, that we would build, that we would grow, that we would look at our own lives as Proverbs says, "To let our eyes observe our ways and ponder the path of our own feet." And Father, if there's anything that's hindering your work in our life, I pray that you would make that known to us, Lord, that we would be conformed into the image of Christ. And that is every Christian's purpose, to be conformed into the image of the Lord and walk as you've walked. Father, I know that there's people dealing with different struggles and challenges that's come in the building tonight. Father, people's dealing with financial difficulties, marriage difficulties, physical difficulties. Lord, I pray that you would place your hand on each heart, Lord, and lift us up by the power of your might. We need you tonight as we meet together. Thank you for Brother Josh and how you've used him. Your word says that you've chose pastors, teachers, and evangelists for the perfecting of the saints and for the work of the ministry and for the edifying of the body of Christ. And I've found edification in Brother Josh Adams and Amber and their family. Thank you how you used them in my life and the encouragement they've been. I pray, Lord, that you would bless them and give Josh grace tonight as he preaches and teaches. I pray, Lord, that you'd be able to speak through him. Lord, we didn't come to hear him, we come to hear from you. And I pray, Lord, that you'd meet with us tonight in that way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen. God bless you, church family. Everybody stand with me. And we'll sing 409, 409, "When We Walk With the Lord," 409. Trust and Obey. Everybody sing out with me. When we walk with the Lord, in the light of His Word. What a glory He sheds on our way. Let us do His goodwill. He abides with us still. And with all who will, trust and obey. Trust and obey, for there's no other way. To be happy in Jesus, but to trust and... On that second. Not a burden we bear, not a sorrow we share. But our toll He does quickly repay. Not a grief nor a loss, not a frown nor a cross. But it's blessed if we trust and ob... Sing out, church. Trust and obey, for there's no other way. To be happy in Jesus, but to trust and... On that last together. Then in fellowship sweet, we will sit at His feet. Or we'll walk by His side in the way. What He says we will do, where He sends we will go. Never fear only, trust and obey. Trust and obey, for there's no other way. To be happy in Jesus, but to trust and obey. 373, turn over to 373. Take my life and let it be consecrated, Lord, to Thee. 373. Take my life and let it be consecrated, Lord, to Thee.
Take my hands and let them be.
At the impulse of Thy love, at the impulse of Thy... On the second. Take my feet and let them be swift and beautiful for Thee. Take my voice and let me sing, always only for my King. Always only for... On that last. Take my will and make it Thine. It shall be no longer mine. Take my heart, it is Thy own. It shall be Thy royal throne. It shall be Thy royal throne. Let's sing one more, Standing on the Promises, 335, 335. Standing on the Promises. I'm thankful that we do have the promises of God that we can stand on tonight. I'm thankful for His word this evening. Amen. And where would we be without the word of God in our life to light our path, to light our way? Thy word is a lamp unto our feet and a light unto our path. And I'm thankful that we don't have to squeeze our stress ball wondering what the will of God is for our life. He has revealed it in His word. It's clear, look no other place than the written word of God for the will of God for us. 335, Standing on the Promises. Amen. Sing out, church. Standing on the promises, I can't... Our King, through eternal ages, let His praises ring. Glory in the highest, let us shout and sing. There you go. Amen. Sing out, church. Standing, standing, standing on the promises of God, my Savior. I'm standing on... Let's sing that second verse together. Standing on the promises that cannot fail. When the howling storms of doubt and fear assail. By the living word of God, I shall prevail. Standing on the promises of God. Standing... Oh, yes. Praise the Lord. Standing on the promises of God, my Savior. Standing, standing. I'm standing on the pro... Last verse. Standing on the promises, I cannot fall. Listening every moment to the Spirit's call. Resting in my Savior as my all and all. Standing on the promises of God. Standing, standing.
Standing on the promises...
Oh, good. Praise the Lord. I'm standing on the promises of God. Let's be seated. Father, I thank you tonight for your word. I thank you, Lord, that we can stand, that we have a place to stand. Your word says that man shall not live by bread alone, but by every word that proceeds out of the mouth of God. Your word says to sanctify them, to grow them by Thy truth, for Thy word is truth. And I thank you, Lord, for what we've heard. I pray that tonight that you would instill your word in our hearts and our minds, Lord, that you would help us to where we're at. I pray, Lord, you'd encourage the church and the faith, starting with me. Lord, we need you tonight. Realize you don't need us. I ask, Lord, for your presence as we gather together as the ecclesia, as the local church, the gather-together body of born-again believers. And we thank you so much for loving us. Thank you for this place that you have sanctified and consecrated for your purposes here at 210 Oak Grove Road. We thank you, Lord, for all the ones that's gave to Brother Josh and his family, Lord, and give financially for them to be here this week. Pray, Lord, you'd bless the giver and the evangelist tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen. Brother Josh?
Well, if you love the Lord, say amen. So thankful for the house of God. And I too want to say, Brother Grayson, thank you for your faithfulness this week, the faithfulness this week and to the house of God. And it's hard when work's going on and school's going on. And I've never understood why we send kids to school for eight hours and they come home with four hours of homework. I don't understand that. But anyway, my kid's homeschool and they get it done in half the time. Amen. And mama has to go check it to make sure they done it all. Can I get a witness? And I understand things are busy and boy, heartaches come and things go and problems come. And boy, the devil catches us off guard sometimes. And then sometimes with the devil nowhere around, we get ourselves in trouble. Heard a preacher say this one time, said, "If the Lord cast the devil into hell right now in the lake of fire," he said, "We woke up tomorrow, he said, "We'd still be in a mess because of our flesh." And but I'm thankful that you're here and appreciate the lady delivering the water tonight. And I was picking with her last night. I bought some little cards from her for $10 and I told her I was going to sell them for 20. You'll move them a little bit, but appreciate you tonight. And boy, I am burdened this afternoon and I have no idea why. And so we'll just have to see what the Lord does. And I asked the family to sing a few songs and I might sing something with them. We're going to try to find the mind of God. And got several things that I would love to preach and want to say and want to do. Got to make sure it's what the Lord wants tonight. And so they're going to sing a few songs. And you worship and might even have a few testimonies. We'll see what the Lord has before the preaching of the word of God tonight. But I'm going to pray and they're going to sing. And I hope everything is okay between you and the Lord tonight. Well, it's one person. I said, "I hope everything's all right between you and the Lord." And the only way it'd be all right with you and the Lord is if it's all right with you and the person beside you, the person across the pew from you. My preacher used to say this, there's not, there's not a situation that two Christians can't work out. He said, "The problem is finding two Christians." Woo! Finding two Christians. And so being able to, being willing to be right with God and not right yourself. Ain't always got to be right. And so I just ask you to cleanse your heart tonight and ask the Lord if you need to come to the altar. Boy, thank God for the altar. And the altars always, should always be open at church. The altar, you know, when I found out about the altar, things die on the altar. And that's the reason why some people never use the altar. They're not willing to crucify theirself. Paul said he had to do it daily. And I would venture to say if Paul had to do it, you and I need to do it. Crucify our flesh, kill that thing, climb up on that cross, let the Lord crucify our flesh. And it's one of the reasons, I was in a church a while back and a guy was complaining about, he said, "Oh, brother, so-and-so done been to the altar three times, one service." I said, "I never worry about people that come to the altar. I always worry about people that never use the altar." People that come to use the altar does not bother me, but people that never use the altar. This is sad, Brother Grayson. I grew up in the same church for a long time, 20-plus years in the same place before we left for ministry. And there were people in that church that I never seen go to the altar. Wasn't that I was looking for them, you just never seen them there. And boy, what a shame to come to church where God's words being preached, the Spirit of God's drawing and wooing and for people to never use the altar. People can do what they want. I understand people do. There's venues and all that kind of stuff. When I got, when I got saved, it was at the altar. I got called to preach at the altar. The Lord answered many prayers on the altar. And so I wanted to marry my wife on the altar. It was a sacred thing. It was a holy thing. And I wanted to marry my bride at the altar. So some of the greatest and the most highlighted things in my life happened at the altar. And I like going to visit them. We go home and our old building is behind our new building. And the men's prayer on Sunday nights at 6:00, service starts at 6:30, the men's prayer, Brother Rick, is in the old building. And we was there a few months ago and when they knelt to pray, everybody just knelt out in the chairs where they were. And I went and found that spot where the Lord said, "Hey, I want you to be a preacher." And I knelt there and thanked him because I told him at night, I said, "There's no way you could use me." And looking back, I know I ain't nobody. For 20 years, I said, "Lord, my goodness, what you have done with our life just because I gave it to you." So I challenge you to use the altar tonight. You say, "Oh, Brother Josh, you're trying to manipulate. You can think what you want. I'm trying to encourage you. I'm trying to stir up the gift of God in you. I'm trying to remind you, bring some things into remembrance, what the Lord's done for you. And it might be good for you to use the altar tonight. You obey the Lord and we'll see what the Lord..."
Everything was planned just so. The prophecy had been foretold. The journey was so long, the stable was so cold. On the night that heaven came to touch the earth below. For God so loved, that He so gave His own begotten Son, the world to save. Without Him we were lost and without hope. The greatest gift we can receive. For every whosoever will believe, He came so everlasting life, we know. All because God loved us so. He understands the pain we feel. He chose to die on Calvary's hill. He knew what He would face, so rejected and alone. We meant more to Him than all the riches of a kingly throne. For God so loved, that He so gave His own begotten Son, the world to save. Without Him we were lost and without hope. The greatest gift we can receive. For every whosoever will believe, He came so everlasting life, we know. All because God loved us so. So much mercy, so much grace, that He would come to such a place. So much love, how can it be that God would so love even me? For God so loved, that He so gave His own begotten Son, the world to save. Without Him we were lost and without hope. The greatest gift we can receive. For every whosoever will believe, He came so everlasting life, we know. All because God loved us so. All because God loved us so. You may wonder why I sing His praise every chance that I get. You may wonder why I raise my hands or why I shout amen. You may wonder why tears fill my eyes when I hear the old rugged cross. You may wonder why I live for Him while I'll serve Him at any cost. Cause if you knew what my life was like before Jesus came and made things right and saved me from the mess that I was in. And if you only knew where I would be had it not been for Calvary, then my friend, you would understand. Looking back on how far I've come and how much He has blessed, all the joys He has given me despite my sinful past. No greater friend have I ever known than this one who walks by my side. And oh, what a difference since He came into my life. Cause if you knew what my life was like before Jesus came and made things right and saved me from the mess that I was in. And if you only knew where I would be had it not been for Calvary, then my friend, you would understand. You may wonder why I sing His praise every chance that I get. You may wonder why I raise my hands or why I shout amen. You may wonder why tears fill my eyes when I hear the old rugged cross. You may wonder why I live for Him while I'll serve Him at any cost. Cause if you knew what my life was like before Jesus came and made things right and saved me from the mess that I was in. And if you only knew where I would be had it not been for Calvary, then my friend, you would understand. Looking back on how far I've come and how much He has blessed, all the joys He has given me despite my sinful past. No greater friend have I ever known than this one who walks by my side. And oh, what a difference since He came into my life. Cause if you knew what my life was like before Jesus came and made things right and saved me from the mess that I was in. And if you only knew where I would be had it not been for Calvary, then my friend, you would understand.
Eric, you stand up and tell us where you was when the Lord found you.
I was in Baptist church in that church, probably 80, 90, just got married, not involved. In a church with my wife's family's church, wasn't Baptist church, but the Colleen Baptist in the lab. Heard the gospel, got saved.
My goodness. What a blessing. What about you, sister, our taco cooker?
I was on the road to divorce. It was only by this pass mark. I almost ripped apart my whole family for the lust of my flesh.
Sure.
I was living in the world. And I knew that I was on the road to hell and I got saved in a bedroom floor. And I knew that I was on the road to hell and I got saved in a bedroom floor. Two AM at night.
That's good.
But they needed to make me pray to God. I had to have a family.
What a blessing.
Amen.
Brought us here.
Oh, what a blessing.
Praise the Lord.
We have a big family. And my life has never been the same.
Oh, what a blessing.
Amen.
What a blessing. I love testimonies. And I like different testimonies because everybody's got different stories. And I appreciate her saying what she did because she recognized that she was headed to hell and she was tearing everything up following the lust of the flesh. That's where you gotta get, you gotta admit that you got a problem for you can get help. And then you gotta make it right. And now they're here on a Tuesday night, walking every night with their little boys up the sidewalk cooking for the preacher. I'm about to throw this microphone. Oh, what a blessing. Watch out, brother Rick, won't you testify for us tonight?
Well, I brought me to the fourth Christian camp. I was born ten, I probably go to church. We make up for it. Made the mess of my life. Going to my prayer purposes, God said He definitely. Really, really appreciate that. And God brought us here. Good man, God.
Yes, sir.
I just thank God, He didn't give up on us.
Oh, what a blessing. So good. So good. Aren't you glad that the prodigal had a home to come home to? Aren't you glad the daddy didn't board up the windows and let the grass grow tall? Boy couldn't even come home. Cause the daddy saw him before he got there. And ran to him. And boy, is that not like the Lord? If I recall in my Bible, it says, "If you'll draw nigh to God, He'll draw nigh to you." The old black feller named Arthur used to work for my daddy. Struggled, y'all probably heard me tell this story. He stuttered real bad. And he said, "One thing, brother Josh, I learned about God." He said, "You takes one step towards Him, He'll take two steps towards you." And boy, is that not the case? If you'll make headway back in His direction, He'll welcome you with open arms. This is the only problem, this is what I was trying to tell you young'uns overnight. And I appreciate brother Rick not glorifying in his sin. He glorified in his Savior. I appreciate the sister not sharing all the sin. Glorifying the Savior. We're not gonna glorify sin and the devil. But both of them, I would venture to say, could tell us, the problem is when you go out there, you come back with scars. You come back with baggage. It's not just one generation ago. The Adams were whore-mung and drunkards. You know what's sad? My Papa was a church-going man. Sang in gospel torchets. But lived a double life. My daddy fifteen, my uncle seventeen knelt in their bedroom and said, "We're gonna change this generational curse with the help of God." And now I don't fight those demons because they went off in a valley and killed them. Killed those giants. And I wanna do that for my children. And Ms. Carolyn, won't you stand up and testify?
The Lord has saved me. I left the church, I got back to my house, I was with my aunt and I went back nine to three. The Lord showed me, I was lost.
Hallelujah.
I was going to hell and I might have died that night. And then I knew what that couple was.
Hallelujah.
Thank God.
Thank God. Hallelujah. Praise His holy name. You hear that, young'uns? Got saved as a young girl. Never walked away from it. She said, "I'm not perfect." But she stayed. Jonah, won't you stand up and testify?
Well, about three weeks ago on Monday, the Lord was committed to me about my salvation. I was scared to take another step that I was gonna die in hell. I went to my mom and dad's room, the Lord saved me and I just said, "Thank you."
Yeah.
Amen, buddy.
Happened several Mondays ago, Jonah was struggling. Only time you ever have church, when you're at church, I feel sorry for you. You got this song on your heart?
Oh, my gosh. That is not my turn. But the Lord says it is. I got saved at a lot of Christian camp. And it was a camp I was actually just about to discuss with you in person. And I am thankful for a Godly heritage and my daddy that sacrificed to send me to a Christian school. And I'm thankful that my children are at that same Christian school, learning about our Lord. And I'm just grateful for the value of the books that they're life.
Amen. Hallelujah. Anybody else about to bust? Not all y'all at one time? Who?
I was saved when I was eight years old and it wasn't the street of Winston. I don't even know what church it was or anything. I grew up Sunday mornings. I didn't even know what Sunday was. I was standing up here all the time. And we went to the new neighbors that we might have had a bus in the street.
Amen. Hallelujah.
And they told me I had a bunch of these guys. I was going to go, I'm running a guy, I'm running a job, so I'm going to get him. But I'll stay there. And I did, thought I could put it, I had like one, two years, that's my right here in the city. I'm kind of working. I'm in Jersey, I'm working all day, I'm very busy. I'm looking back, I said, "Oh, God was the bigger than me." I remember when he was like, "Don't worry, he's better than us." Like to that, I remember God was like me. Now, I remember I was like this, you know, because he told me. He told me, and my brother. I'm very glad I can come up right now. I was like, "Thank you." That's sixteen, I'm not this close. And we're there, and I'm thankful that I got any of those. And I can do a lot better than that. It ain't as hard as that. Anytime, I'm always there. And I'm just really glad that I'm in this church.
It's good. Thank God for a church, yeah.
God has blessed me in the gospel life. I'm blessed in a ministry.
Yeah.
I had my problems. I've had some. It just comes since. And we go to church. But it's the same that I've experienced. And it's just how it happens. I'm hurting for it.
Mama. Hallelujah. Hallelujah to God. Thankful.
That's just. I mean, I went up to the bank.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
You know, program, commission me.
Yeah.
It was actually across the publicist church in Perkinsville. And that's still, and on my way, we moved. And I extended to you.
That's so good. You said it was walking, you said gospel life. Brother Bobby Robertson was? Yes.
I just remember being small. I was yesterday. You know why?
Thank God. Yes, sir, buddy.
I wanna thank the Lord. I want to mention He knows about us because every time that I've had. I was truly tempted or said that I was really desperate. I said it one way or the other. The Lord has always had someone that's able, competent, and able to escape. Yeah, that's right.
It's good, buddy. Good, buddy. So good. I love ministries of the church. I love bus ministry. Me and Amber did bus ministry, was bus captains. And I was making good money for the kids. Those kids would get on that bus, I had a store up the road. I would stop and get a dozen biscuits and then I had to pump it up to two dozen biscuits. Brother Eric, when we had to walk away from that bus ministry, we were going to Philippines, we were getting seven dozen biscuits on Sunday mornings. Brother Keith, I watched some of them kids eat six and eight biscuits. They get on that bus and what they come home from school in on Friday? I'll never forget, there was a little mixed boy, his name was Sean. And him and his sister Mimi, it was in a trailer park. And he started coming to church and he was always stinky, but he loved brother Josh. He was looking for somebody to love him. And smells always have gotten me, I'm just being honest with you. It gets me. And he always stumped, he'd climb up in my lap and say, "Carolyn, I'd try." He just wanted to love it. So I showed it to him, he got on the bus one day and found an old tie in his Papa's closet. And his tie, the way they tied it, hung the ground as he was getting on the bus. He got on that bus, boy, and he was so thankful in that tie. He said, "Brother Josh, you like, you like what I'm wearing?" I said, "Sean, I love what you're wearing." He said, "You like my hair?" I said, "I love your hair, Sean." He said, "I brushed it just like you brush yours." And the Holy Ghost said, "If he's watching what you're, how you're brushing your hair, he's watching what else you're doing." And Sean got away from the Lord and we didn't see him for a long time. We come home from the Philippines, we went to Walker and I was pulling in a car wash. And the guy that tells you to come forward and put it neutral, and he looked through the window. I didn't recognize him. The world tattered on him. He said, "Brother Josh?" I rolled down my window and when I seen his eyes, it was Sean. He hit that emergency stop on that car wash. Pulled my door open, hugged me, I'm talking about bear hug me. He said, "Hey, guys." They all come out, see what's going on, that's what he said. This man right here led me to Jesus. Son, I about drove my car wash, bumped nine people out in the road, tore me up. And I said, "Sean," I said, "you remember when the Lord saved you?" He said, "Oh, do I remember." You never know who'll walk in the back door and sit with a daughter and grandkids. "That's your daughter, I suppose?" "That's your daughter?" Yeah. Got out, but God saved him. And don't forget, our job as Christians is to go into the highways and hays. That is the mission field. I'm gonna let them sing and we'll see what the Lord's continuing to do. This is what He does. I've been fretting all afternoon and I've been tore up in my spirit. And I should know better than to say is to trust the Lord. Ain't it crazy how I preached on last night? I'm watching what you see. Watching what He said. And here I am tonight, struggling. That just shows you how weak we are as Christians. Let me rephrase, that how weak I am. You can put your own stuff in there. This song Mallory's gonna sing, it says, "How lost I was, but how saved I am."
I still remember who I used to be. When this heart cried out to be free. I was desperate, a failure, in need of a Savior. And I still remember the moment, the time. When I finally surrendered my life. I was broken and ran into arms wide open. Oh, what a difference He made in me. Because of the blood, I'm forgiven and free. Everything changed the moment His mercy found me. Found me. Now every sin has been traded for grace. Love came and washed away every stain. And I'll testify over and over again. How lost I was, how saved I am. Maybe you're thinking you're too far gone. You can't get to the cross from the road that you're on. But He'll find you right there. Trust me, I've been there. Oh, what a difference He made in me. Because of the blood, I'm forgiven and free. Everything changed the moment His mercy found me. Found me. Now every sin has been traded for grace. Love came and washed away every stain. And I'll testify over and over again. How lost I was, how saved I am.
Anybody else wanna testify? Maybe where the Lord found you or... I'm gonna give you opportunity. Yes, ma'am? I love hearing how God does these things. Putting broken homes back together, He's a pro with that, amen? He's good at that. Let me tell you what He needs, He needs willing vessels. Y'all know the story of the widow at Zeraphath that fed Elijah? The story where she had a little meal and a little oil, First Kings 17. And God had asked her to do a task. And it was to feed Elijah. And the task that was set before her, Ms. Carolyn, was not something that she had the ability to do with what she had. But what she did, she took what she had, gave it to God, just like last night. When we come back, who's ever in your house?
Yeah.
I wonder, I wonder, and I know, I'm not trying to add to it. I'm just trying to use my imagination a little bit and just wonder. Who all ate out of that barrel? But here in a few verses, her boy dies. And she thinks that God sent the man of God there to bring judgment on her home. Elijah brings him up to where he was staying, lays over him and prays, and God raises the young boy back to life. And I just had the thought hit me, I wonder, I want you to listen to me. Things are so conditional all throughout the Bible, do you agree? Let me lay a little foundation, the Lord says things like, "If you do this, I'll do this." Now, how many thankful, when we hold up our end, aren't you glad God always holds up his end? So many things are conditional in the Bible. And I wonder, I wonder tonight, if you've been asking God to do something and he's not done it because you've not done what he asked you to do? Make sense?
Yes, sir.
I wonder, when they begin to pray for that boy to be raised. The Lord said, "Well, she did what I wanted her to do. Now I'll do what she wants me to do." See, many people, I said last night, talking about the Spirit of God, many people use that as a hoax to get out of something. Told you, it never goes against Scripture, never goes against Scripture. Are you listening to me? The Spirit of God will never lead you against Scripture. The Spirit of God will confirm Scripture in your life. That's what the Comforter does. That's why he said all throughout the Word of God in the New Testament, alright? Listen to me, there's different dispensations you gotta study when you're talking about the Spirit of God. In the New Testament, when God would speak to his children, listen to me. He would, there are things, the Bible says, we gotta not quench the Spirit, to not grieve the Spirit, are you listening to me? One of them has to do with something he told you not to do and you did. One of them has to do with something he told you to do and you didn't. And so what happens is, we've got to, we've got to live our life off the guidance of the Word of God. And when this woman asked God, listen to me, it confirmed in her heart. And so the Spirit will confirm things in your heart, are you listening to me? And it'll confirm Scripture. Faith cometh by hearing, hearing by the Word of God. It's never gonna go opposite of what the Scripture teaches. And the Spirit, listen to me, listen to me. When you're reading Scripture, people will take Scripture out of context, are you with me? And they gotta understand, all Scripture is given. But let me tell you what happens is, you might be reading in a book and you're in a wrong dispensation. You gotta figure out who he's talking to and what he's talking about. Don't get confused with it, just keep reading. I tell people all the time, keep studying. Don't get bogged down, keep studying, and you'll find out that the Scripture will confirm Scripture later on, and you'll say, "Ah, now I understand. I studied in the book of Matthew, I got so confused." Still to this day, a guy asked me a question tonight, I was out there trying to find the answer. I don't like it when they, they give me questions I gotta study for. But the Bible says you better be able to give an answer. I wonder if in your life, you're saying this, "I'm waiting on God." And I wonder if God's saying, "No, I'm waiting on you." You might be living in sin, there might be a public sin you're living in, and you're praying to God. I want you to listen to me, I want you to listen to me. Don't take me out of context here, or try to say something I didn't say. If you're living in sin and praying, he's not listening. He's not listening. You gotta get forgiveness of that, you gotta get right with that. The Lord's not going to bless some things. Talk to me now, the Lord's not gonna bless it. In order to have the guidance and the leading of the Spirit of God, you have to be right with the Spirit, you can't quench it. You can't offend Him. Oh, how many times have I done that? With my attitude? My spirit? Brother Keith, I'm, I take a lot, honestly. I could take a lot, I could take it, I can take it, I can take it, when I blow, I blow. Sorry, being transparent to you, I blow. I wish I'd tell you I was a perfect Christian, I struggle so badly. Ms. Carolyn, boy, I struggle, I struggle, I struggle with my spirit. Because there are two natures inside of me. If I'll be honest with you, I wish I could tell you I feed the spiritual man, but I slack a lot of times. And that fleshly man, everything you see, everything, you can't look at a billboard, you can't, you can't scroll through a reel on Facebook. Everything feeds your flesh. You've got to put up guards when you go to Walmart. Being right with God. My whole desire, I want to be right with God. I want to be right, I want to hear His voice. I want to feel His comfort. I want to enjoy His peace. I want to enjoy the victorious Christian life, and the only way I can do that is be right with Him. The only way I can be right with Him is to be right with others. People say, "Oh, I've heard that before." Well, maybe you need to act on it. Not be hearers only, but doers of the Word. We've heard enough preaching, we've heard enough preaching to reach the world and all be phenomenal Christians. The problem is, we've not applied it to our lives. All we do is do, do. I was telling Brother Grayson, I told y'all Sunday night. I heard a preacher preaching on the gifts of the Spirit. We get so caught up in the gifts that we realize that it's not in what we do, it's who we are. Y'all okay? It's who we are. You ever been around somebody and it's like the glow of the Lord was on them? You ever been around somebody like that? That you walked away and your spirit bared witness with their spirit, and you thought, "Wow, boy, that was like a shot in the arm." You ever been around a backsliding Christian? Boy, it's like the spirit inside you saying, "Ooh." I think sometimes, can that, do they not tell? Can they not tell? Cause everybody else can tell when we're not walking with God. It's very evident. Do you know them, them three right there and that one right there? They live with me. I try my best to be real, I do, you can ask them. What you see here is what I try to be at home, but I struggle. My spirit. Oh, they can tell when daddy's walking with God and when daddy's not walking with God. And how my attitude is, how I respond to them. See, my, I don't want to say my job, but my role and what I do, some of the gifts God gives me, is I listen a lot of times to preachers, discouraged preachers, sometimes give advice, sometimes just listen. And I'll listen and listen and listen, and my patience will be worn thin, cause sometimes I want to tell them things, but it's not the timing, are you listening to me? So I'll listen, 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 this one to this one's heartache, listen to this one's heartache, and I come home and I don't want to listen. I'm done. I don't want to listen to y'all, shut your mouth. Talk to me now, you saw Brother Josh, shame on you, I know. But I'm just telling you how I struggle. I can't tell you how many times I've had to get in the car and say, "Y'all, I'm sorry. My goodness, I'm sorry, I'm, I struggle so bad with my spirit." No, you can stop playing for a second, I know your finger's about to fall off. My spirit. So, so many times, I've had to get right with my spirit and my attitude. So many times, I've had to go back in my Christian life where the last time the Lord spoke to me or impressed on my heart with something through His Word, I had to go back to that, Brother Keith, and make that right. Then I felt the joy, I felt the communion. I felt, I felt what the Holy Spirit was sitting here to do, you'll feel it. But in order to feel that, you got to go back to the last time. The old story, you've heard it a hundred times. The older couple riding down the road, and she used to sit down beside him, number one trucks aren't bench seats no more, amen? Pulled up and they were separated, they said, "I remember when y'all used to sit together." And the old man said, "I ain't went nowhere. She's the one that slid over." Huh? You know, that's what God's saying, he's not went nowhere. You hear what she said, "When I come back, I found him where he was." Brother Rick testified, "When I come back, I found him where he was." That's where you'll always find him. And I want to challenge you tonight, once again, a different service. I had something in 1 Corinthians, the Lord, I thought, putting on my heart, on the body of Christ, but the Lord don't want it tonight. And this is what I, this is my desire. You hear how quiet it is? This is my desire, no music. I want you to listen to me. I want you to search your heart before the Lord. "Brother Josh, I don't know anything between me and the Lord," that's fine, ask Him. See if He'll put His finger on something. And let's all have a time of silence, if you need to come pray, if you need to go get somebody, or I have no music, no, you can go be seated, and different timing. And let's, let's examine our heart, there are times for music, there are times for all those things. But if you have to have all of that, you've got more feeling than you do the Spirit. I know people that only come to the altar when that song, one song sung, and they'll wait till the end of that one song to come to the altar. And the Lord's put some things on my heart tonight that I need to deal with, and I pray He's done the same for you. If not, you can sit there while the rest of us deal with the Lord. And, and I'll tell you one thing before I finish. My pastor used to tell us, Brother Grayson, "There's two reasons I go to the altar. One, cause God spoke to me. The second one is, cause He didn't." He said, "There's only two reasons I go to the altar, one, cause God spoke to me. Brother Keith, he said, "The second one is, I go cause He didn't speak to me." That's all I want, I, I'm not trying to tell you you have to come to the altar, but I'm asking you, if you need to come to the altar, you can pray where you are, if you need to come to the altar, and if you need to be saved. There might be someone in here tonight that's lost and undone without the Lord. The Spirit might be drawing you tonight. You might need to be saved, you come, Brother Grayson's on the front row. If he's busy, you come get me. If you need to be saved tonight, you come to the Lord. If you need to get right, I'd do it tonight. And my prayer is this. That if you leave here wrong, that the Lord will make your bed sheets short, He'll make it the most uncomfortable thing you've ever laid in in your life. That's my prayer, that the Holy Ghost will convict you until you do what he says to do. do.